Again, Thursday, December 6th, 2013. Continuation of the hearing of Brian and Elizabeth Coys at 70 Woodcombe Avenue for a variance. Under Section 4-A in the zoning bylaw, no relief is necessary to replace an existing breezeway and garage with a new mudroom, family room, and single-car garage addition resulting in a front yard setback of approximately 24 feet from Howland Lane where 35 feet is required at 70 Woodcombe Avenue in Residence District B. Last time we were talking about getting a better plan, and that's -- I take it this is it?
I hope so, yeah.
Okay.
So, I think there were three takeaways that I had. One was to have it stand, be official.
Yeah.
Which you can see that has been standing. The other one that I believe Mr. Freeman wanted was the line, which you can see that kind of traverses through the proposed garage, showing that setback a little bit more clear than the original.
Yep.
And then the third one was the kind of the new proposed driveway lined up to the new structure. So, you can see that probably a lot more clear than the original plans.
Still current, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so this pretty clearly indicates the setback and how much of the proposed structure's in that setback.
Correct.
I think this is what we were looking for, at least.
Yeah.
In my view, so.
Yeah.
Well, this -- I think we were satisfied with making the findings last time, just subject to this.
Correct, so that we could put a condition in as to the maximum extent of incursion into the site.
Right, and so you're comfortable with the decision which will in fact require you to adhere to the plans that you submitted.
Correct.
Right, okay. That's, I think, in all of our interests.
Okay, great. I'll ask because it's our practice, is there anyone in the audience who wants to speak on this application? Okay, good. I didn't think so, but I thought I'd check any of them. So, I guess we talked this through last time about the findings and everything, so I think we're all comfortable with it.
Yeah, I think the record already reflects the findings.
Correct, yep. It does. It's in a motion, I guess.
Yes, I'll make a motion that we improve the application for the variance, replace an existing breezeway and garage with a new mudroom, family room, and single-car garage addition resulting in a front yard setback of approximately 24 feet where 35 is normally required from Howland Lane for the 70 Woodcombe residents of Brian and Elizabeth Coys.
Motion. Do I hear a second?
And so the motion is that it's approved subject to the plans as submitted at the meeting, is that correct?
Correct.
Second motion.
Okay. So, it's second and all in favor.
Aye.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Sorry we have to come back. Perfect, great.
This is exactly -- this is very helpful.
Yeah.
Do you want these extra copies for your own records?
Might as well.
Yeah, sure.
Because we're just going to recycle them.
Not necessarily, Chief.
Yep.
No, no.
Thank you. We want to switch seats. Joe, when we open this, you go to the chair.
Yes.
In other words, this is the hot seat.
The hot seat.
I'm going to turn back the clock and make a change.
So, we don't start until 7:30?
Correct.
Right, yep. So, I didn't know any chance to read those cases.
I read them.
I have, sure. I knew you would.
But they're actually very good reading.
Okay. You can pick the chair.
Well, I'll give you the big chair. This is your stuff?
Yeah. There's the --
That is correct.
It's my stuff.
Correct. Do you have the same [inaudible]? You should send an email saying, yeah. Yeah. It's -- I think he's emailed us after, and he used the [inaudible].
Just retire.
Did you read any of the decisions, Susan?
I scanned through the first one, the normal room.
Yeah.
You know, some things might be issues.
I know, yeah.
So, we need to stop. We've got to beat them up instead. I'm going to ask John if he's having a [inaudible]. Yeah. Verify that at least I [inaudible].
Right.
Does that have to be final plans?
Right.
That much I did scan.
I'm expecting it to be torrential rain.
Supposed to rain today? At least it's not snow and ice and down to 10 below zero.
Yeah, the weather forecast was.
It's like 50 degrees.
Yeah, it's like springtime, yeah.
Yeah, we have the winter storms.
Yes, and they fly in when you open the anything?
Right. I remember driving down South Pleasant this time of year, they just flock your back.
That's right, that's right. I'm saying, what is today? No, December 5th.
Yeah, I'll pull these cases right out.
To accept the town of Hingham's internet policy.
I just use the [inaudible] wifi.
Yeah, yeah.
Which is great, if we were going through [inaudible], I could just hop on that.
Yeah. So, what am I doing? I'm [inaudible]. Hingham Town Public Hall.
Is it just one she says?
Yes, there's more that she circulated that I've got from Susan, but. That's going to be crazy.
We should get some [inaudible].
Yeah. I didn't know you were going to kill trees, sorry.
No, no. And Susan has a chip.
Okay.
Do we say?
Do you have the time schedule worked out?
Yes, I have it in [inaudible]. It says all units are [inaudible]. I think it's [inaudible] the homeowners association. What does that mean? Is it a condominium? I mean, this is [inaudible].
Oh, oh, there it is, I'm sorry, great.
And maybe ways of [inaudible]. So, which is it?
Okay.
I don't think that's clear. Do you think that's clear?
Yeah. It says fee simple.
Yes, you do.
No, you have undivided.
Oh, that's right, undivided.
You do, you don't.
Yeah. So, I don't know what that means, but if it is, they are, if it's not a condominium, they're not submitted to Chapter 183A.
Right.
Then it's a subdivision, then it's a [inaudible].
Okay.
So, it's either one or the other.
They haven't, otherwise I just have another stuff.
No, they haven't asked for the little name and answer anyway, [inaudible]. So, which is it? That's my question.
Okay. All right, that's good.
Okay.
Mind if I show this to you?
Oh, no, go ahead.
Just on this, it's not [inaudible]. It's in record with the [inaudible]. See, fee simple. So, that means it's a subdivision. They were there for waivers.
Correct. Because they have an answer subdivision approval, but if it's not a condominium.
That's right. You just got an [inaudible]. Then you're going to need to see all the waivers, that's what I'm saying.
It's not a condominium.
No. You got to look at it, we'll ask them. Do you have the original application?
Yeah, it's right. Both in here and here.
Todd, if you talk about the fee simple, it's going to be condo associate.
Okay, well, that's not.
Did you say that originally?
That's not what it says.
That's not what it says. It says fee simple with a homeowners association.
With a homeowners association.
That's not a condo, though.
No, I understand that. That's what I'm saying, is we changed our minds.
Yeah, let's hold up and we'll.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, okay. Because you didn't ask for waivers.
Okay. Are you ready? This is the Hingham Zoning Board of Appeals. Time is 7:32, and the next item on our agenda is a continuation of the application of SEB Hingham LLC for a comprehensive permit under Mass. General Laws, Chapter 40B for the construction of a 20-unit homeownership housing development, including four affordable housing units within 10 different buildings to be called The Village on Main on approximately 12.72 acres of land at 895-901 Main Street in Residence District B. The parcel of land are identified on assessor's maps as 16899 and 168100. This is a continuation of the hearing. The hearing was suspended pending a decision by the Housing Appeals Committee. The Housing Appeals Committee on November 7th of this year issued an interlocutory decision regarding the safe harbor issue that had been appealed by the town, and the interlocutory decision by the Housing Appeals Committee said that the town had not made a prima facie case showing that they had achieved a safe harbor percentage of 10%. So, the proceedings were remanded back to the zoning board for a continuation. Who's here for the applicant?
I am.
If you can just state your name for the record, so we.
Jeff Engler, representing SEB Hingham LLC.
Bob Engler, SEB.
Bill Buckley, Bay Colony Group.
And certainly if there are others that you want to call, you can introduce them later, but you're the three of you now representing the applicant. Before proceeding, I just wanted to go over timing so that we're all on the same page, and if there's things that you want to accomplish, we fit it in our schedule. Things we want to accomplish get to your schedule, and that the public is aware of the time that we're proceeding under, the time constraints. I'm going to go over some dates just to get it into the public record and to make sure that you're all comfortable with this. The application date was February 28th, 2013, with a hearing deadline of March 30th. The hearing opened on March 28th, ahead of the deadline. There were continuation dates of May 22nd and December 5th. The hearing was stayed on June 12th. As I said before, the Housing Appeals Committee issued its decision on November 7th, so the tolling period then resumed at that point. The time that it took during this whole staying process was 148 days. The deadline to close the hearing, we've calculated it as February 19th, which was 100, which is 180 days total to conduct the hearing, and then the time for this board to issue its decision would be, I'm sorry, to come to a decision would be March 31st, which is 40 days that we have under the regs to render a decision, and then our deadline to file a decision would be April 14th of 2014. Are you okay with those dates? Do you have any issues with those? Okay.
We do not.
Thank you. So, we're going to proceed, and the applicant is agreeable that we're proceeding with these dates, and that we will then, as we progress, schedule hearings so that we can accomplish the deadlines that are required. And just a word to the applicant that if it turns out that you, as things progress, you want more time to develop something, just ask, and we can certainly by agreement adjust these dates, but these, absent any other agreement, these are the dates that we will follow. One of the things I'd like to do this evening is to have a presentation of what I now believe are revised plans, different from the plans that we initially reviewed, it seems like such a long time ago, but it still was within 2013. And then I'd like to hear from our consultants, but I appreciate you've done substantial work and have in fact revised the plans, and I'm going to make sure that we're all up to speed and that the members of the public are up to speed as to how you would like to see this project move forward. We have here at the table, in addition to the board and the zoning administrator, we have the town council. Susan, do you have anything you want to add at this point?
No.
Okay. The proceeding is being recorded, and in addition to being recorded is being videoed, I believe, and the person handling the videography has asked that whoever speaks if they could either stand at the mic or at least grab the mic so that it in fact is going to be audible for the record. So, with that, I would ask the applicant to now walk us through the plans as revised, and it'd be helpful if you could, as you discuss it, reference back the original plan and say how it's been revised. For example, I understand that the number of units has changed, so referencing back to that, we'll see the progress of the revisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just going to speak very briefly because most of the changes, in all honesty, are of a technical nature, civil engineering related, and we have our civil engineer here tonight, Bill Buckley, to talk about that. I mean, the most substantial change from the original plan is we reduced, Phil, could you go back to the original? We can order a movie.
After the hearing.
Okay. The, there was a duplex on that plan to what's shown there, the furthest northern easterly duplex. This is the original aerial. Well.
What's that, right in the corner?
Yep. That building was eliminated in its entirety, so the 20-unit proposal is now 18 units. But for the most part, the driveway, the grading, and the other features of the site remain really unchanged from the original proposal. However, we have done significant work to things going on under the road and our septic design and our stormwater management plan, so I'm going to turn it over to Bill and let him walk you through the latest plan set, and I think that'll be productive. Relative to what's gone on, the town's peer-reviewed traffic engineer submitted a letter, I don't have the date in front of me, but within the last six weeks or so, and basically we've agreed to everything that he's requested, recommended. So, from our perspective, we don't have anything more to talk about relative to traffic because what the town is asking, we're agreeable to. So, without further ado, why don't I turn it over to Bill, and he can more articulately talk about really the differences from the original plan to now.
Before I lose you for the moment, the units have gone from 20 down to 18.
Yes.
Has that affected the number of affordable units?
No, it has not. There were two market units that were eliminated, so we still have four affordable units, and now we have 14 market units instead of 16 market units.
Got it. Thank you.
Just because I'm a lot shorter. Mr. Chairman, good evening. For the record, my name is Bill Buckley from Bay Colony Group, and I'm here, I'm the civil engineer for the project. What I'd like to do, because it's been so long, is just kind of go through very quickly some of the design elements of the project, and then we'll talk about some of the changes we've made over the past couple of months. The driveway itself starts out in Main Street, it's about 675 feet long. So, this would be, we start talking about stationing, et cetera. This would be what we call Station 0+0, and this is about 6.75, so 675 feet long. The topography of the site starts out with along Main Street, it's about elevation 115. There's a ridge that runs along the top, along the site, kind of in this area here as I'm circling, and that's about elevation 135. And then it drops off to the northwest here to about, to this wetland, and then this wetland wraps around the side, which you can't see at this, in this configuration. It's about elevation 95. So, it starts here, rises up, and then drops off, and that's what we've done with our roadway in order to kind of mask the topography as best we can here. So, we start here, we come in at about an average of about maybe 4.5% to about right here, which is about 3.50% or so, and with a maximum grade of about 6%. And then it drops off a little bit, about 2% from this point to the end. And just for people who aren't following what I mean, it's 2%, that means every 100 feet it drops 2 feet, or every 100 feet it rises 4 feet. The roadway itself is about, is 20 feet wide, has curving, and has sidewalk over here on the north side where I'm pointing. The site is served by water, which will come in off of North Main Street. Since we've had our last hearing with you, we've done flow testing out there. As you can imagine, with water dripping plant being right up the street, the flows are more than adequate to serve the site, and we supply the town an Aquaria copies of those test results. It'll be served by an 8-inch water main that will go from main all the way to the end, where it will end in a hydrant, and there'll be a hydrant in the middle and a hydrant in the end. So, again, one of the elements of the design is where the locations of the water and the hydrants are. It'll also be served by natural gas, which again would come in off the street, and underground electric, which again would come in off of the street. We show three light poles on the site, and we just make a general note that they're gas lanterns, one here, one in the middle, a gas look, not actual gas, but a gas look, and then one down at the end in the cul-de-sac as well. So, that covers the water, the electric, the gas. It's very basic, it's all underground. The site is also going to be served by a stormwater system, which has a multiple, has multiple stages within it. It's very similar to what you would see almost every day if you sat on the planning board. You would have catch basins, manholes, and then some type of infiltration system in this particular case. Because the site lies within a zone 2 of your municipal well, it's considered an area of, you know, critical, a critical area, so therefore we have to do certain types of recharge, certain volumes of recharge underneath the DEP Stormwater Management standards. What we've chosen to do, and again, in a general manner, this is a preliminary plan, we're kind of breaking the road at the high point here. It pitches that way, it pitches this way. So, we have two major drain systems. The first is down here on the, down by Main Street, and it will consist of an underground infiltration system, which we've modeled in this case as 48-inch drains under the ground surrounded by stone. So, the water comes into the catch basins, goes into a manhole, which also contains a water quality structure which further cleans the water, and then it's infiltrated into the ground or captured, held and infiltrated in the ground by this system. Down here on the end here at the cul-de-sac, same deal. It's, it comes down the roadway, and the stormwater is captured in catch basins, manholes, and infiltrated into this underground system as we show here. There are a lot of things that go into it. We have to deal with the rate of runoff, which can't be more than existing condition. We have to deal with the volume, and we have to deal with recharge, which again has to mimic as a minimum the existing condition. These systems will do that. We do show an overflow, and what I mean overflow, I mean when we model these, we model them for the largest storm, which is a 100-year storm, a storm that has a 1% chance of hitting us in any particular year, and that's what this system is modeled to handle before it will actually overflow. So, we do have an overflow system, and the overflow would be down into the wetland to the north here, which this is a bordering vegetated wetland, which is bordering the Eel River, which is more to the west. It's actually on the edge of the property, but it's well to the west. Down here, we had an overflow which tied into a 24-inch drain in the street, and we still show that, but we had some discussions with the town the other day. Town engineer had a concern with that, so we just said that we would eliminate that if it's an issue with them. We'll just eliminate the connection into the town drain. We'll just eliminate the connection into the town drain system. So though we show it there, that's actually one of the changes. We've also --
Let me just, if it doesn't connect to the town system, could you explain how that's going to work?
It will continue to work the way it was. It has a 100-year storm flow, so this will handle 100-year storm, which is the maximum design storm that we have to handle. So that's what we have to do. We have to make sure. It acts as a detention basin as opposed to a retention. Retention basins have some type of outlet at some level. Detention basins don't have outlets. This will be a detention basin, which will maintain everything on our site. The, some of the, I know it's --
So sorry, just one more on that. So without the overflow for that, potential, if it's greater than 100-year storm, or you can't, but continuous where the volume fills the chamber, so it wouldn't back up in the street potentially?
Yes, it would. If you, if something is greater than the design storm, that's --
If it's full and can't get in, it's not going to get in.
That's right. So this is the area coming in off of Main Street. You can see it's busy. I know there's a lot of lines here. The light line is the buildings. You know, we show the topography. It's a, it's a choice you have to make when you're doing plans. How much daddy do you show before it gets too confusing? But so what we're showing here is we show the drainage. Here's the sewer line, which is actually a septic. It ties into the septic, which I'll talk about in a moment. There's the gas line. Here's the water that comes around. It's very busy down there. Here's the electric. It's busy down this area. So one of the concerns, I'm sure you're going to hear from your consultant, is that it's too busy down here, and there's a concern that if someday somebody had to dig up, say, that drain system, it would be difficult to get around that, where the construction would be. So what we decided was, okay, we can take this and move this over here off the driveway. So we can take the stormwater system and just move it out of the pavement here. So if it ever did have to be serviced or dug up, it would be dug up out here, and it wouldn't be a block to anybody trying to come in the roadway. So that's one of the changes that we discussed at our staff, professional staff meeting, your professional staff, but we haven't made that modification yet. We will make that. Another element of the drain system is, you know, we have to, we can't, we can't put untreated water leaving the site or entering the wetlands in this particular case. So we have to treat all the stormwater. And when we say treated, we have to treat the stuff that hits the pavement. Roof drainage is considered clean because it's residential roofs, it's not metal or anything. So what we've done with that is, in this particular project, and on many projects you do it, is these little things right here, you kind of see them spread around the site, there, 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 you can kind of see them. And they're near the buildings. And what we'll do there is we'll take the roof drains, the gutters, tie them together, and tie them into these infiltrators. And so that is one of the elements of the drain system. Again, in discussions with town consultant, some of these in the front yard are going to be, would be deep because these are walkouts. So you tie the gutter in and then bring it around the front, but it would be deep. So his concern was, again, if you ever had to dig that up, it would be inconvenient. So what we've decided, what we're going to propose is to, some of them we're going to move to the back, like this one right here, we can move to the backyard in here. This one right here, we can move to the backyard. The limitation on these has to do with the septic system. They have to be 50 feet away, so you can't move them in the backyard because it'd be too close to the septic. So what we're going to do with these units is, when we move this system out here, we're going to tie these in along the back like this through pipes. So we'll pick up the roof drains at the low spot in the backyards and run them along the rear of the property, tie them into this. So that will actually become bigger in our final design because it will have to take the runoff from these buildings here, but it will eliminate the issue of having the infiltrators in the front yard and the potential maintenance issues with that. So those --
You're going to hook all those infiltrators together and pipe them down to the retention basin?
No, no, we're going to get rid of them. That will go, that will, two of them will move, that one and that one. These we'll get rid of.
Got it.
And then we'll tie it together, and we'll make this system bigger.
Okay.
So that's our course of action on that particular issue, which seemed to be a large one in the review. The next thing that was coming, that's been coming up continuously, is the location of the septic system, the size of the septic system, et cetera. So we've done soil testing throughout the site. We've done six different tests, several in the area here. You can see there's one right there, and there's another one right there. Then we did some in the area of the septic system, and there's actually a third one. And even throughout the site, we've found the soils are consistently really good. They're really good. They're very consistent. So we satisfied ourselves at the type of soil we're dealing with and the depth of groundwater. So when we did that, then what we've done is we've sketched out a conceptual preliminary design for our septic system. So what it's going to be is, up in the roadway here or the driveway, there'll be a sewer line. It'll be just like a sewer for, if you had a sewer going to a treatment plant. And it will run down there, and all the houses will tie into that line. And then that line will tie into an 18,000-gallon septic tank. That's the number we have right now, based on the number of bedrooms we have right now. That might go up or down a little bit. But that will be a septic tank that will be down here in the cul-de-sac. That septic tank, because we're in a Zone 2, and we have more than 2,000 gallons per day, we have to have secondary treatment. That was one of the comments that was made, and that's correct. So we need secondary treatment because the effluent quality has to be better than what we're looking at, which normally a septic system. So what we're proposing right now is, and we just did it for modeling purposes, we have a microfast 9.0, which will treat up to 9,000 gallons of effluent, and that tank will, what happens is, is that this is the septic tank, and then it goes into the microfast tank. And then actually, some of that will be pumped back into this tank. So it's kind of a loop through here, and it will, three or four times, it will, the water will cycle through this system in order to clean it. And then eventually, what will happen is, is it goes out into this pump chamber. Pump chamber will then pump it out into this system. We've modeled this system as just regular trenches, three feet wide, two feet deep. But they could be other things, you know, we could end up, when we finally end up with it, it might be plastic chambers or something similar to that. But it will cover pretty much this area that we're showing right here. Because of this, the topography of the site, you know, everything drops off. It's, I think it's kind of hard to see, but you can see the elevations. It's relatively flat through here, the finished grades. There's 116, 114, 112, 110. So this area will be where the system goes. Because of the elevations, we have to step the system down because the top of the system can be no more than three feet below grade. So this system will actually be stepped down. Now what does that do? Well, you can't dose that type of system all at once because it screws up the heads. What you're dosing has to be approximately the same elevation, otherwise you'll get different flow rates for different lines. So what we're proposing is, again, this was a question that was asked, so we put a little more detail on here. We'll have this recirculating valve here, or a cycling valve, that will cycle, and maybe it will do these two, the first dose, these two, the second dose. You know, however, we finally end up as the design, but what the design will do is, we'll equally dose the system throughout the course of a day. They won't all get dosed at once, but in an equal period, the system will get dosed. So that's the type of design we're looking at here. We've also added, there were some questions about setbacks, distances to slabs, distances to sellers, distances to infiltration systems. So we've added that. We know that it has to be 10 feet off a slab. We know that it has to be 20 feet off a seller. We've added that information on there to show that we can do it. We've put the 50-foot line on. The 50-foot line is the Title V requirement for a septic system. And we've also added a little bit more on the way of detail of how a polyvinyl breakout barrier could work. We've put a wall over here, again, as a breakout barrier and for grading purposes. That's a modification from the last plan that you've seen. So we made some, we've added some detail to the plan, but the basic plan that you've seen, that you saw, really has not changed. The basic elements of the design, the way we're going to handle stormwater, the way we're going to infiltrate it, the way we're going to handle effluent, none of that has changed. We've added, again, some detail to the plan, so we said, okay, based on what we know now, here's what we think the elevations of the bottom of the trenches might be. We've added the cross-section of the roadway to show what the, you know, the cross-section of the road itself would be. Again, some things that were asked for us to do. We've added some spot grades in there on the plans.
Does that recirculating valve, does that need power?
No.
Doesn't?
No.
So just gravity force or whatever, the water force will make that work properly?
Yep. Every time it just, it just cycles to the next one once it hits. But the fast system requires power. The second tank, you were talking about the valve.
Yeah, I was talking about the valve. There's, you know, relative to typical septic system, there's a lot more going on here.
Yes.
And so I'm just wondering what happens if there is a lack of power, you know?
Yes.
Extended power shortage, just trying to understand how this works, that's all.
Sure. Okay, here's the way, here's the way some of the elements of the design that we have to deal with, with the Title V requirements. Because this is a septic system, and because it falls under Title V, we need to have one day of capacity. So you see that 8,000-gallon pump chamber? That thing is probably 7,000 gallons bigger than it needs to be because really, it doses quite often, so it doesn't need to hold a lot of water. It's not like it's going to hit an 8,000-gallon dose. It will probably be like a, you know, 200-gallon dose, or whatever the number is, it's a small dose. The reason you have such a big number like that is because that's going to provide the reserve capacity. So if the lights go out, the power goes out, then you'll have at least one day of reserve capacity within that pump chamber so people don't have to leave their house. The reality is, that one day is based on Title V flows, which are probably double what a real flow is. So, you know, you might, you know, you won't get one day out of it, you'll get more than that. People aren't going to, you don't have a dishwasher to use, you don't have a laundry to use, you don't have hot water. So water usage will go down substantially, but it is one day. Another option they can do, the Condominium Association could do, is have an emergency generator. They can plug into the, the control box, and that could power that. It wouldn't even have to be that big a one.
Is that something you'd recommend they have?
Yes. So I think that from my, the big things that I deal with, the stormwater and the effluent, I think that pretty much covers the changes.
Have you been involved in presentations to the Conservation Commission?
No. No, not, we have not. The only thing we've done with the conservation is the ANRAD, which is the delineation of the wetland line. So we haven't met with CONCOM yet, and we haven't met with the Board of Health yet.
I don't know, Jeff, if you want to address where you stand with the Conservation Commission, when your filings would be made and how that would impact this?
Yeah, we had a meeting on Tuesday, and actually, the Board of Health and Conservation both attended that, so they're up to speed on our plan. But any formal filings would be made post-CON permit.
Just, I don't know if we've talked about this before, but typically, applicants make their filings with the Conservation Commission prior to filing here, so that if the Conservation Commission makes requirements that would affect the plans, then we could ultimately approve the final plans. If you're doing it reverse and Conservation Commission requires changes, the permit that we've issued, you will not be able to comply with, and you will have to reopen the proceedings. So that seems to be an interesting choice.
Sean, we did talk about this the first hearing or the second. We know it's at our risk.
Right.
Every developer has to make that call. In light of the dynamics of what's happening in town and the lawsuits and the like, we're willing to just do what we have to do and not go to a degree that ends up not getting us anywhere. So we recognize that.
Okay, I appreciate that.
And they've come twice to us, and we haven't heard anything specific, but granted, if they find things wrong with us, we have to come back to you for any plan change, so we recognize that.
Right. At this point, I think before even having our comments, we might want to hear from the experts, and, but before we do that, I just want to, Bill, the presentation you did was excellent. Do we have that in electronic format? I assume that's a PDF that you were just opening and closing, or Emily, do we?
Emily, I believe, yeah, I think we submitted all the plans with the disk, no?
With the original application, not the recent.
Not the recent one?
Right.
Okay. We certainly can get that to you right away, all in PDF format.
I mean, it was very helpful as you were expanding, and it really enabled us, and I'm sure the members of the public, to see in detail what we're proposing. Very helpful. I appreciate that. Okay, who should go first, I guess?
John Chesley. John Chesley with Chesley Consulting Services. Got a bit of a cold, so hopefully you can hear me. We did meet this week. We went over some of my comments. The main thing I want to sort of just point out to the board, as you know, I'm an engineer, so I'm, revealingly, I look very carefully, with a lot of detail at all the different things. There's really not a lot of, you know, the plan sets some detail, but there's no backup, there's no calculations for anything. So all I could really look at is sort of what I thought might be obvious things that we discussed, as Bill discussed, the entrance, the stuff's very tight. All, I mean, this is a tight site. To put everything in there, in my opinion, it doesn't fit very well. There's not enough room for access for maintenance and things like that. We talked about it in particular in that area, but, you know, there are other areas as well. That, and I know they're changing it, but that underground system at the upper end is like 12 feet deep. You have a water main three feet away from it. It's five feet deep. So if you ever had to access it, what are you going to do, strap up the water main to a drain and wait? I mean, you can't, it's just not practical. I think, I like to look at things, because I go out and do a lot of construction inspections, and I like it to be something you can actually take care of, because that will be a cost to the owners of these.
Right.
So it's very tight. It's a narrow road, and there's not a lot of room in there. So to just sort of walk through the main sort of highlights, I guess, there are no drainage calculations, so everything we're looking at here is a schematic plan. They understand, and we did discuss this as well, they understand that's at their risk. They will have to develop the drainage plan that complies with DEP Stormwater Management regulations, you know, address all of this rate of runoff, recharge, treatment, erosion control, operation and maintenance. control, operation and maintenance. So there's a lot of issues that are still out there, that we don't have any information on relative to that. Septic, it's the same. I mean, they have a plan, schematic, they show it. Originally, they didn't have treatment, they have that. So I mean, schematically, yeah, they have treatment. Yeah, they have a leachion area that may be digging up. I know the soil's out there from what I could see from that, it looks like it's all gravel and sand, so it's probably pretty good. But it's also right on, but not, you got a 10-foot setback, it's 10 feet. 10 feet on this side, 10 feet on that side. There's no room. You've got a retaining wall at one corner, you've got a building at the other. It's really tight. Pressure dosing on a slope is complicated. There's no design calculations, it's not so simple. So I point those out. We don't have the information.
So is it anticipated that we will continue through the process, make our decision in connection with this application, and then they will come back with the technical information you want? And if so, is there, is there an escrow or something? How do we, is there provision for us to have money to review the technical data that we don't have now that we normally would?
Is all the stormwater regulations going to be what is part of submitted to CONCOM when they?
Typically, typically what, I mean, these things, as you know, a lot of different ways. And I've done a lot of reviews of them, I've designed them, and I'm pretty familiar with the process, but what is critical from the board's perspective is to write conditions that cover what's not there, such that when it does come in, you get your review. Now, yes, this will have to go to CONCOM, so stormwater would be reviewed at CONCOM, and that may cover it, and you could just defer it all to CONCOM if it shows. Board of Health will have to review the septic, you can defer that to Board of Health if you so choose to, or you can condition it that you want to see what happens.
No. Yeah, no, just, let me just clarify. So any, the local wetlands waivers, the board has to decide whether or not you're going to grant waivers to specific local wetland regulations. The wetlands bylaw, and regulations, the local ones. I don't know if Abby or the CONCOM has provided any feedback on specific applicable? I mean, I saw one kind of brief letter from Abby that goes back a number of months that just says, you know, they have the delineation, and that's it, and they haven't filed with us, and we'll cover everything. But if the CONCOM wants to weigh in on anything local, they have to do it now.
Right.
It's the same thing with the Board of Health, and I know that the Board of Health may be putting it on their agenda for next week to discuss all the local waivers, but they will have to file with the Board of Health.
For Title V.
For the Title V state regulations.
Right.
But with respect to the laundry list, particularly on the Board of Health local regs, you need to get the feedback on that now. If the stormwater, the state stormwater regulations that John's referring to, if those are going to be covered by CONCOM, it can get rolled into that. But anything that's not going to get rolled into Board of Health or CONCOM has to be covered here.
Right. I get, what I'm unclear about is, as we evaluate waiver requests, we need to determine if the applicant is making a request for waiver of a local requirement that if we didn't grant the waiver, would turn this into an uneconomic project. And I don't know how we make that assessment if we don't have the data to see how much of a waiver is really required. For example, the, just the drainage calc is the easiest one. We don't, we don't know how much the local needs to be relaxed, because we don't, we don't have the underlying calculations.
And you're saying on which, so which local, the?
Take your pick.
The wetlands?
Yeah, for the wetlands local bylaws.
I'm not sure there's anything above and beyond the state's nor borders.
That's one.
Right. And I'll make another comment, too, that I noted in here, which kind of raised my question, which just needs to be clarified, on is this a subdivision, is it not a subdivision? But the regs provide, if the project doesn't request a subdivision approval, which they have not requested subdivision approval, then waivers from subdivision requirements are not required, although a board may look to subdivision standards, such as requirements for road construction as the basis for project conditions, in which case the applicant can seek waivers. But all they've asked for is a generic waiver of all subdivision rules and regs. I checked with John, we don't have a specific list of waivers from the specific rules and regs, so for example, drainage.
Right.
So there's a lot of holes in the information.
So just, my understanding is that this board is going to need to make an assessment about the applicant's request to waive local rules. And to make that assessment, we need to know how far you're butting up against those rules, or how those rules are impacting your project. If we don't have the underlying data to make that assessment, how do we, how do we determine if the waiver is necessary? I'm missing how we can do that.
Mr. Chairman, typically, the last hearing, we go through the waivers based on the evolution of the discussion and the plans. And so I can't answer specifically to those waivers. I can hear generically what you're saying.
Right.
I think the burden is on us to say why we need it, and we need the same information that you do to say why we need it.
Exactly.
And if we need it based on preliminary plans, we have to ask for it if we need it. We're not going to ask for it if we think our final plans are going to be different than our preliminary, and therefore, we need it later. We can only ask for what we see we need. So when we go through that.
Right.
We'll have to look carefully with you and say, do we need these for local regs? We obviously can't waive any state regulations.
Right.
So it's all local, whether it's Board of Health, or CONCOM, or zoning, and we'll see whether we need them or not. And that's what we have to, and we'll show you the order of magnitude of what we, what we're proposing versus what that bylaw calls for.
Yeah.
So we have a better handle on all that.
I think, I think that's exactly right. And so looking at our time schedule, we need to figure out when we would have that hearing to discuss the waivers, because that's not going to be the last hearing. There may, there's going to be some give and take. We're going to say, you don't need the waiver, you're going to say you do need the waiver, and then it's a question of the impact on the economics of the project. That entire discussion, I don't think is going to be a one-session discussion, you're going to have to go back. So in terms of scheduling when that event would happen, and we can work backwards from there, if we have a last hearing date of February 19th, there's a line to close the hearings, it seems to me that we need mid-January at the latest to have that hearing. Does that?
Yeah, because the 5605 subsection 6 sets out, you have to have all the consultant review completed, then they have to modify if they're going to modify any further, then you have to figure out if there are going to be any other conditions, you have to go over waivers, they have to say whether they're economic or uneconomic. I mean, that's a whole, I mean, it may be, it could probably get done in a couple of hearings. A lot of these things can be condensed into one meeting.
Right.
But all of that needs to occur.
Yeah, I think two hearings, if you pick those hearings in mid-January and the end of January, if you meet every couple of weeks, if we're only meeting once a month from here to February, there's only three hearings.
I can't wait.
Yeah, so if we're meeting every couple of weeks, and you pick two hearings, you tell us, and we'll be ready.
Okay, thanks.
And if I may make one other comment, and it's really more for the benefit of the neighbors, is the characterization is like, yeah, they haven't provided any data, there's, I can't make any judgments, it's insufficient. I mean, we work on a lot, a lot of 40B projects. The amount of information that we've provided more than meets what's required at this point in time, which is conceptual level detail. It's at our risk, and as we explained to the peer review consultant, post-permitting but prior to a building permit, if we're not complying with state guidelines, and Mr. Chesley, who's doing the review, says you're not doing it, it's at our risk, we have to change the design, so, you know, it's a time delay, it's more money, and we certainly would expect him to review the calc and the mounting analysis and all of that, and he'll have ample opportunity to do all that. But we're not going to do that as part of this process, which is consistent with, you know, other 40Bs, I'm sure that you guys have dealt with. So I think that's important, because the neighborhood's probably sitting there saying, these guys haven't done any work, so, which is, in our opinion, not true.
Right, I mean, it's true that in 40B projects, you don't need to have that level of detail in order to get this board to issue its decision. But we need a sufficient level of detail to assess the waivers, and that, I think, we are missing. So we'll have to work to get that. Did you have anything else, John, that you wanted?
And just a couple of things I think that I just want to point out. We had a discussion, I think there's some issues, and they're not necessarily the ones we want to talk about, regarding the work in Main Street, there's some grading needed for a site, which I talked about. Also, when I walked the site, which was several months ago, that's when I walked it for my first review, I think there's an issue on some of the grading, in particular, I heard that unit A14, B15, see, yeah, it actually shows it as a 90. Something's a little amiss in terms of the contours and everything, because of the floodplain might back into an area underneath or close to B15 and A14, which would affect, I mean, they're, they're filling floodplain so that the septic can build, and they would have to fill it more for those units to be built, and then you need to, I mean, a compensatory storage is an issue for that. CONCOM, again, might look at that, but the, you know, the board should be aware of those things. That may be a local wave, or you might want to look at that, which is on too, and things of that nature.
Right, exactly.
What's the, you know, and that, that pretty much, I think, sums up those other questions.
Joe, did you have anything for John?
No, I guess the filling of the floodplain, I'm just not, I just want to be 100% certain where that's shown. Is that something I see on grading plan, is that C2A?
This is showing.
Is it that area? Yeah, that's what I thought.
But I think this is.
This area, okay. Because this is called on a worksheet as wetlands filling, and it didn't seem right now, so it's floodplain, yeah.
Okay. Todd, do you have anything?
That may be another way over that, or floodplain, special part of the project.
Right.
Right.
Yes. Okay, Mr. Dirk?
I think it's in the waiver list already. I think it's already in the waiver list. The floodplain, it's already in the waiver list.
Good evening. For the record, Jeffrey Dirk with Vanessen Associates, you're traffic review consultant on the project. We had issued two review letters to date on the project, one back in April, which asked for them to do a little bit more work relating to some data collection, primarily focused on the entrance of the property, and then some onsite circulation items we had asked them to look at. And I think as you'd heard from the beginning of the presentation, they did provide responses to those initial review comments. We have had a chance to review that, and we issued a letter over, cover page is dated June 11th, which is when we actually completed our review. We issued this on November 14th, so that's the official date of the letter itself. So with respect to the things, homework that we had asked them to go back and look at, you might recall that they had done some travel speed measurements on Main Street. Using a certain methodology, we had asked them to go back and look at doing it a different way, which would eliminate some of the potential human error factors in the way that they had collected the data. So they didn't go back and do that, and they did measure the speed of traffic using a radar speed measuring device, and that looked at the speed of traffic over 24 hours a day for two consecutive weekdays, so they measured the speed of somewhere close to 20,000 vehicles over those two days. And what they arrived at is that in the vicinity of where their driveway is, the 85th percentile speed, which is what we measure our site distance, based on, was 42 miles an hour, based on those, again, 20,000 vehicles measured in that area there. So that correlated into a requirement of 325 feet of site distance for a vehicle that's exiting the property. So we had asked them, once they verified the speed measurements, to develop the plan that you see here, which is a site distance plan, and it's done in both plan and profile view, and the profile's just below here. So what you're looking at is the vehicle positioned exiting the property here, it's set back from the edge of the traveled way, about 14 and a half feet, that's where it's assumed the driver is, and the driver's looking to the left or right, and they look at that and plot, you can see all the contours, so then we can look at it in cross-section here, so we can see where there are obstructions that may block the field of view for the motorist exiting the property. Now, looking to the north, we had noted before that there's a double utility pole and a fence in that area there that would need to be removed. That utility pole is just about in this area here, so you can see the sightline actually goes through that. There's the pole right here. So the double utility pole, because of its nature of being double-wide, it does block the field of view of the motorist looking to the north, so we said that's got to be reconciled. Looking to the south, Bill, if you could, yeah, thank you. Looking to the south, what was noted, based on our field observations and their engineers' observations as well, is that there's an area, just about in this location here, where you see that 118 contour that comes across.
Yep.
That actually obstructs the motorist's view, so there's regrading that needs to take place, and that shows up in the drawing down below here. So this actually lines up directly above, so you can see in this area here, there's some regrading that needs to take place within the public right-of-way in order to achieve the required sightline. There's also a couple of trees you can see that will be impacted as well. So the estimate is about three trees that would potentially be, need to be removed, and then regrading, as you can see in the drawing down here, within these limits here, and that's all within the public right-of-way that need to take place. So as a result of that, they would be able to achieve the desired sightline. We had also recommended that beyond just the minimum clearings, that there should be a little more clearing, I'm sorry, a little bit more regrading, so that what we want to make sure of is wherever the elevation is that they achieve, between that elevation and where the sightline you see, you generally want to have, if it's in the infield area, is what we described here, you generally want about a foot and a half to two feet of additional clearance, just because of the fact that you're going to have snow piled in this area here in the winter months. And unlike what you'd have at a driveway opening where we, you can make a condition that they actually remove the snow in that area there to keep the clear sightline, snow in some instances here will be retained, just because of the fact that it's shaded, and so, because it's not going to melt like it would in the roadway, and it's not physically going to be cleared, so you want additional freeboard in order to accommodate that snow storage. That's, again, about a foot and a half to two feet that's recommended, and I think they've shown that in the plan here to be able to achieve that. So that would all happen within the public right-of-way. Other things that we asked them to take a look at, we had recommended wider width on the driveway, I think 22 feet. They proposed 20 feet, and looking at it, given the volume of traffic that we're talking about, 20 feet is adequate and acceptable. But in order to achieve that, we had asked that they go back and do their truck turning analysis, specifically the fire truck turning analysis. So they did deliver that information to us as well. So the 20-foot width works, it's acceptable, it meets design standards for what's known as a low-volume roadway. A low-volume roadway is a roadway that accommodates less than 400 vehicles per day. The projection at 20 units, it was about 160 vehicles per day, so it's clearly within the range of a low-volume roadway. When they ran the truck turning analysis, it shows that the truck, the fire truck is able to access and circulate within the property. Can you bring up the site plan, just the cul-de-sac area? One of the things that we did note is that, as you look at the truck circulation plan, perfect, Bill, thank you, in this area here, when you look at the fire truck, there's a couple of components, is the physical track of the wheels, but then, of course, the truck has an overhang with a ladder component on it as well. So the truck, the wheelbase stays entirely within the paved area, but what you note is it goes around the circle here, is that the ladder overhangs into the sidewalk area. So what we've said to them, as they develop their final plans, they need to make sure that this area where the overhang is going to happen, you can't have trees, street trees, signs, or the lighting components that they've spoken about. Anything that's going to be over seven feet tall needs to be set back out of that area, so that needs to be kept clear. The other thing relatives to the site plan had to do with the driveway distance, and the length of the driveways, and the relationship between where the garage door is and where the back of sidewalk and the traveled way is. So some research was done both by the applicant, they provided the information to us, we did our research as well on what the design standards are for driveway distances. Originally, we had said that we wanted enough room so that the driveway would have five feet of clearance in front of the garage door, and then if you assumed that you had a 19 to 20-foot vehicle, total dimension would be somewhere between 24 and 25 feet in that instance. In doing the research, literature research, what's recommended is that where you do have a sidewalk, that you want a two-foot clearance between the garage door and the front of the vehicle. The design vehicle, pickup truck or large SUV, is about 19 feet, so if you're looking at a situation where you have a sidewalk, what that suggests is that you want a total of 19 plus the two feet, so 21 feet between the garage door and what we call the leading, or the far edge of the sidewalk, which is the edge closest to the garage. Where there are instances where there's not a sidewalk, there's an additional buffer that's required, so that distance would be 23 feet from the garage door to the edge of the traveled way. So we've asked them, just as they're developing their final plans, to ensure that to ensure that those distances are met as they look at the site plan itself. I believe that was it in terms of the review and the comments that we had. And as mentioned, the applicant has agreed to implement all of those recommendations as a part of their final site plan drawings. We...
Well, we raised a question because of our meeting, Bob Engler, meeting with the various staff members. They wanted to know if we were providing a crosswalk across the street to get to the sidewalk on the other side. Jeff Dirk had said that wasn't... We did think it was a great idea. He didn't recommend it, but he's here to talk about it, so we need to clear that up.
That's a good point. And actually Emily had raised that with me as well. Crosswalks, if you're going to install crosswalks, you want them at intersections. This would, although this is, it's an intersection, it's really two driveways is what you have here opposite each other. And a motorist is generally looking for activities at roadway intersections. So intersections of public ways and not with driveways in terms of the intensity of activities and such. So a crosswalk installed at this location would be considered what's known as a mid-block crosswalk and you do want to avoid those. If you were going to install a crossing, you would want it at an intersection. So you need to probably need to go to the south and have it at Highfield and have the intersection or the crosswalk happen at that location. Because of the speed of traffic at that road, it really is something that you need to be cognizant of, being careful on where you install them and looking at site distances as well. Because at 40 miles an hour, a vehicle that's approaching a pedestrian that's trying to cross the roadway there, it comes upon that pedestrian very quickly. The width of the road also is something that it does require some time for a pedestrian to go across there. So when you look at the time that they're exposed to traffic, it's actually, you know, any situation where it's not desirable to have it at a driveway, but at an intersection, it may be something that's acceptable to have that at a location with appropriate signs and pavement markings well in advance of the intersection. So we wouldn't recommend that it be done at the driveway and that if you wanted a crossing, that it should actually happen at an intersection such as at Highfield Road. And we'd want to make sure that there's adequate sightlines at that location.
Was... I'm not clear on this. Was one of the reasons for the crosswalk for schoolchildren?
Only if the school bus was going to pick up the children on the other side of the road. I can imagine, I'm not sure that they required... They'd probably pick up on both sides, although I'm not exactly sure. What we were clear was that we didn't want a separate area for children to wait and so they have the sidewalk in an area so that the children can wait in this area here and not be standing out in the roadway so that a bus could pick them up at that location there. We would not recommend, again, if a cross was going to take place, we would want it down here. And in that case, if you wanted to link that, obviously there would need to be a sidewalk to get the children up to that or any pedestrian up into this area here.
You mentioned the utility pole to the south, I think?
Yes, up in this area, yeah.
What would be the implication?
I'm sorry.
What would be the implication for the utility, if that utility pole could not be moved? What would happen? How would that affect your sightlines?
The pole has to be removed. One of the poles has to be removed. The problem that you have is if there was a single utility pole, generally you can still pick up a vehicle that's moving. It doesn't... But the fact that you've got two poles right next to each other, that blocks the driver's vision as they're looking out. Because of how close it is to the, where the motorist is actually sitting here, it obscures your view. If it was further away, you might be able to see because it's a cone of vision going out. But because it's so close, the fact that you've got the two poles, it's blocking that cone so that you can't see beyond it. So you would not have the sightline if you did not remove one of the utility poles?
Is... Do we know the reason that there are those utility poles there? Is it a necessity or is it just superfluous? I mean, it's not something you just eliminate and there'll be no repercussions. So I'm trying to understand, is there comfort that the utility poles can be moved?
The typical reason why you have a double utility pole is that you've got, there's one utility that owns the pole and then there's multiple utilities that are on that pole. And each of them have to move their lines from the pole that's being replaced to the brand-new pole that's there. What sometimes happens is some of the utilities move their lines and then you're waiting for another one. You can't, the pole can't be removed until each of the utilities moves their line. So what I'm suspecting is that you might have, I don't know who's on there, but to your electric company and they typically have cable and then a couple of phone companies and such. And there may even be fire alarm up there as well. But each of those entities needs to move their lines to the new pole. A lot of instances, the pole, double poles remain just because one of the utility companies or multiple haven't come and moved their lines. So that's what's got to happen here is it needs to be scheduled. The lines need to be removed and then the second pole removed in that location.
So if there, if one pole remains and the second is removed, is that acceptable from your standpoint?
It should be, yes. What we've asked for as well, and this is that because of the fact that there's regrading, tree clearing, and that pole has to be removed, what typically is done because of that is that you require an engineer's certificate as a condition of the approval, that an engineer who's qualified, meaning it needs to be a professional engineer, has got to go out there once this work is done and issue a certification to the town that the sightlines meet what's been required, which is the 325 feet and that it's in compliance with the plans. So we've suggested that if the project moves forward and is approved by the town, as a condition of that, that an engineer's certificate needs to be issued prior to occupancy essentially of the project, certifying that it meets the site distance requirement. So all of that work needs to be done and then an engineer needs to go out there and certify that the sightlines are met.
This board doesn't have the authority to order the poles moved, removed, altered. Where's the, how does that happen?
The applicant is, you've got, the applicant has said that agreed basically, the pole has to be removed and that this regrading has to take place. So they're on the record with basically saying unless this work gets done, there isn't adequate sightlines at the driveway. So because of that, it becomes part and parcel of part of what you're approving essentially is that is a part of what's been represented to you. In order for safe access to be provided to this property, the applicant has said that this work needs to be done. We've verified in fact that the work needs to be done. They've agreed to do the work.
But this is not work that they have the authority to do, nor the work that we have the authority to order?
They need to go and obtain whatever permits are necessary to have that work take place, which means they need to work with the utility company to actually get the pole removed, the lines transferred. All of that's got to happen in order to, as I said, have safe access into this property. Absent that, they're not able to comply with essentially the site plan and the information that you're making your decision based on.
Okay, and then to the south, you've got the... The work there that needs to be done in terms of the tree removal and...
Correct, and the regrading.
And the regrading. Now, you said that that's not on the applicant's land that would be on townland?
They would need to apply to the town to obtain the necessary permits to construct the driveway and then make those modifications in the town right of way.
Do you, do you know, is the town obliged to agree to that work?
I think that...
No, I can answer that one, Joe. The removal of the trees would require shade tree hearing. So to the extent that that's a local permit or approval, they are actually, that's, you have to sit as a shade tree hearing.
So we need to conduct that shade tree hearing before this?
This has to be part, it has to be part of what you do. I mean, it's going to be similar to the issue with the road opening with the five-year moratorium. However, they do not have the right to go off their property and grade land that does not belong to them. And the ZVA does not have the authority to permit alteration of grades on public land.
So if we issued a permit where that was a condition, we couldn't order it to happen. The applicant doesn't have the legal authority to go on someone else's land to do it. So what's the mechanism to see what happens?
In a similar instance, in the town of Groton, where regrading on public property was required, the SJC found that a town meeting vote is required under state law in order to allow modification of publicly-owned land. So that's the applicable law right now in the state.
Okay, and there's no alternative that you, that you're considering as a way to deal with it on your land?
You're proposing that we do it for safety reasons and then the town refuses to let us do it. We'll have our attorney speak to the Groton case, which we were asked to speak to when he comes in one of the years. Okay, so we can answer your legal question about how to deal with that. As for moving the poles, Bill can speak to that. I think you're alluding to whatever the utility company refuses to move the pole, which has never happened in our experience.
Or they say the reason we've got the pole is it's necessary for some reason.
Well, we're moving it, we're not taking it down, right?
I... Chairman, it's usually, it's a very, it's pretty straightforward. It's not painless because you're dealing with utility companies. But, you know, once you receive your approvals, what typically happens is, you know, you do have to, whoever it happens to be, Mass Electric Verizon Locals, is you'll take your permit so you can prove that there's a need for it and then ask, you fill out a work order, ask them to move it. And then they'll come back to you and say, yeah, we're going to move it and it's going to cost you this amount of money. It's not a, it is, I've never had a, I just never seen where they have come up with a scenario like you just pointed out, which is, jeez, we just can't move it, it's not possible. Especially here where there's such a huge amount of space between the property line and the edge of the pavement, I think it shouldn't be an issue. And the other question, I think, and I'll just talk about it, is from my point of view, you know, it's just me, I'm not an attorney or anything. But, you know, when you file a curb cut, you're cutting down trees and you're moving dirt and you're doing a lot of things in the public right of way. It's not on privately, it's not on a piece of land owned by the town, like a piece of land owned by the town. It's a public right of way and you access it through a permit, a local permit granted by, in this case, the community, sometimes by the state. So whether you're, as a condition of building your project, whether you're cutting a tree down there at the entrance, which you can see, we're going to cut a tree down right there just to get our roadway in, or grading off to the south so that we can do it, I'm not, I don't see why it would be different. You're working within the way in order to access for your project. And that's the way it's, I've always seen it. It's just my experience.
Joe, I have a question for Jeff. Jeff, in order to meet the minimum industry standards for site distance, is regrading necessary?
Yes.
So this is not something the town is requiring? This is something that industry standards require?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Yeah, as we said, I mean, I see, I mean, with all due respect, but I see people within the town trying to, we're just under construction and need them on a very similar job. Two poles removed, regrading in the right of way. Another job we did in Foxborough, I mean, I can't tell you how many jobs and we've never heard of this issue about a town meeting vote. All the driveways on private homes, as Bill alluded to, there's work being done in the right of way there. Groton, the piece of land was not in the right of way. I mean, I'm not an attorney once again. But I think there's this intimation being that working in the public way is somehow requiring a town easement. And there'd be a million people in this town that have done construction that would have required a town meeting vote and an easement. We just have a difference of opinion which obviously needs to be vetted out.
Yeah, I mean, we'll have an opportunity to vet out. But it's important for this board to understand the regulations that are applicable and to the extent that waivers are being requested or that a review is being requested under local conditions, that we actually act on those local needs. So that's the reason.
Yeah, and to understand whatever the applicable law is. The Groton case is a relatively new case, so we just need to make sure we're, you know, sort of complying with applicable law, that's all.
Yep. Okay, did you have any questions?
I don't at this point, no.
I think at this point, it's 29, I'd like to hear from members of the public and else... Susan, is there something else you'd like to do before then?
No.
Okay. So if there are members of the public here who have a comment or question, now is your chance. Please raise your hand, come to the mic and state your name and address and then your question or comment. Yes, sir? Oh, actually, yep.
Good evening. My name is Fran Rocket from 21 West Moreland Road. A couple of comments, as I've heard things here, is that, and I'll be upfront, safety of my children is number one. And to know that... So number one, there's, where the South School is, on that side of the road, there's no sidewalk. The children would have to cross the street to get to that other side of the road. I know the average, they said, I believe, was 42...
42 miles an hour, yes.
Miles an hour. But that doesn't mean everybody's driving 42 miles.
Right.
Excuse me, 42 miles an hour. The other piece that I did not completely understand was the sightlines. But I can say, when I walked down to Highfield with the kids, with the dog, I feel like I'm taking my life in my hands sometimes from where Main Street comes around. That sightline is horrendous and I don't know without tearing up probably the side of a house at Highfield as well as the public land, how that sightline could improve.
Yep.
Thank you.
But let me follow up. And Jeff, you may know the answer. First, with respect to that 42 mile an hour, do you know what the standard deviation or variance is associated with that average?
It's the 85th percent.
85% of the vehicles travel at that speed or lower.
Okay.
15% or...
So that's the 85, okay. Thank you. And then second... Well, we'll have another, you have a chance to talk. He mentioned the question about the proximity of the school. Is, does the South School proximity have any impact on the desirability for a crosswalk or the need for improved sidewalks on either side? Or is that something you have that you...
I would need to look, I mean, I would need to look at its proximity to this location, whether this would be considered within the school zone. If it's outside of that area, then it, if it's within that area and it falls in a special category, the school zone, then what would be required would be a little bit different. But again, if there was the desire for a crosswalk, it would still not be at this location of the Highfields.
My recollection, and it's not, may not be current, is that there is some distance where if you live close enough to the school, there is no bus service and you walk. And is this within that location? Okay, and if it is, if you could look at that, that would be helpful. And I appreciate you. Anyone else? Please.
Question, is that, is that distance, is that a local ordinance or is that a state law?
The school zone is set by the state, but the walking distance is set by the municipality. And it usually reviews distance and facilities that are available for walking. And if there aren't facilities, then they can change what the requirements are. But what I'll do is I'm going to figure out what the radius is and I'll work, I'll contact the school department.
I'm going to say it's probably less than half a mile.
I'm just wondering if that's a local bylaw that is, is something that 40B doesn't have to comply with?
From the standpoint of safety, if it's required that the children, if they're not going to pick them up and they need to walk, then it's a safety issue and would be something that the applicant would demonstrate how the children are going to get to school. Either it's going to be a sidewalk or they're going to need to provide accommodations. If they're not going to get picked up, then they've got to show a safety route to school essentially.
Okay. But I think what Todd was asking is, could there be a requirement that this board order a change in the radius within which bus service would be required? I would be shocked if we had that authority, but it smacks of a local rule and I just don't, I don't know where that comes out.
Well, it would not be zoning, it would clearly not be zoning by it, but...
Right.
I can't speak to the school committee's policies off the top of my head, so we'll have to look at that one.
Yes, sir?
Good evening. Walter Sullivan, 893 Main Street. At the last meeting, I spoke to the Baker Hill situation where the planning board, rules and regulations provided for 500 feet of line of sight under Planning Board Regulation, Section 4B 3A. Obviously, that's for safety when you're dealing with a cut into a major thoroughfare. Obviously, that's for safety when you're dealing with a cut into a major thoroughfare. Such is the case here at Main Street. The applicant should be compelled, for safety purposes, proximity to school, density of the neighborhood and the speed with which vehicles travel on this major thoroughfare, to comply with that requirement, as the developer was required to do in Baker's Hill. So I would urge the board to adopt that with respect to the sightline, the safety of the people and neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff, what's your view on the 500 square foot? I'm sorry, 500 feet, required there?
The, the requirements for sightlines are based on measured speed is what, it's what it's based on. So you do not have a, you, it's very difficult if you set a minimum sightline requirements because sometimes you're going to need more than that. So I'm not sure where the 500 feet comes from. 500 feet is a sightline minimum that would be for like 55, 60 miles an hour. I mean, it's quite, that's a long distance in terms of a sightline requirement. So the sightline requirements are set based on state and federal standards. I don't know that the town has a, a bylaw that requires minimum sightlines. But the state standards and federal standards for the measured speed that they have there is the 325 feet. That's what's required to have a safe condition for vehicles to be able to exit, enter and exit the property. And so that's where that comes from.
Are those guidelines typically modified, updated every couple of years or has it basically been set for a while?
Those, I can tell you that the, the documents get updated every couple of years. The sightline requirements have not changed in terms of those minimum distances. The way that it's measured has changed and it changed in a way to make it easier to meet those requirements because they were finding that the way that vehicles or the performance of the vehicles has changed such that designing to 1950, 1960 type vehicles and those requirements is no longer applicable. So in fact, what they did is they reduced the driver's eye height and increased the object height in the roadway, which, but the 325 feet has not changed. That for, for forty-two miles an hour, that is consistent, it's based on scientific studies that have been done.
Okay. And one other topic, I'm not sure if it's been looked at, lighting out there, street lighting as you, as you enter the property. Are there proposals to increase lighting to enhance safety? Is there a reason that we should be looking at that?
In terms of the onsite, I'm, within the property.
Not within the property, I'm just talking about the entrance.
One of the things that the, the sight distance measurements are based on headlight sight distance as well. So not only we were focusing on the just sightlines for vehicles exiting the property, there's sightline measurements also along Main Street that were done and there was no issues. Those far exceed even the 500 feet that were required there. And those are based on a worst-case scenario where motors, headlights, trying to see a two-foot object in the roadway and, and they exceed what's required for the forty-two miles an hour.
Okay. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Good evening. Jason Ryan from Bruce Road. The latest plans I have are modification, one from June the 10th, 2013, and these are the latest. They, they do reflect the 18 versus 20.
Right.
My notes from the May 22nd meeting indicate that the pits that were drilled in May of 2011, that the committee was requesting new pits drilled under the supervision of the town engineer, and I was curious to know if that took place or if it is planned to take place.
Joe.
I haven't witnessed any testing.
Okay. Is that something that is intended to take place or?
I don't recall the reason why we were asking for that. Do your notes reflect that?
I, I think the, I think the concern was that the, I think there was a little disbelief expressed at the depth of groundwater there, given the standing groundwater that's often visible at the edge of the site where the wetland begins. The plans continue to reflect five structures and the majority of the distribution field within the 100-foot buffer zone. And actually, part of three of the structures are within 50 feet of the wetland. And now, tonight's hearing, we heard that infiltration systems are going to be moved to the rear of some of those properties.
You got it.
And I'm, and I'm curious to know with all the retaining walls that are at or beyond the 50-foot buffer zone, what regulations exist to prevent the intrusion of the construction vehicles into the wetland in order to create those structures? So that would be something that I, I think it would be great to sort of hear a little bit more information about, perhaps at the Conservation Commission versus here at the zoning board.
If I can, I can address that. I'd feel pretty comfortable saying that the Concom will impose a condition that will prohibit that. You know, you're going to have to stake out the extent of the work and it's going to have to ensure that no one inadvertently enters the wetlands during the course of the work. That's pretty standard.
Well, thank you. It's very comforting to, to know.
Right.
Also, I, I just want to confirm what I think I heard is, is the to-be-done list by February 19, 2014? A shade tree hearing, the Conservation Commission, Gordo Health, and then all of the detailed technical data required? Is that?
That's not accurate.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
The Conservation Commission, it sounds like they're going to be pushing off until afterwards.
Okay.
Basically, the other boards that have jurisdiction with respect to state laws that need to apply, they are, they have not begun those proceedings. So that's not going to happen before. But to the extent that we need conservation input on the local bylaw, that's not something that they would do. That's something that this board is going to make sure that we have the information. So to the extent that local bylaws are going to be waived, we've got the input from the Concom.
Thank you for your clarification.
Yes, thank you. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm kind of bad, so I'm not going to walk up, but I just, can you just quickly detail for me procedurally what information you're asking for?
My name's Ed Geroz, I live at 9 Highfield Road. What information are you still waiting on? What are the local waivers that are being considered? Is that completely understood?
Joe, I thought.
And when will that be ruled on by you?
So in their application, they have, I believe it's tab nine, and this is all something that's on file with the board. A list of all of, is it the tab nine?
Nine.
Yeah, it's a list of all of the waivers that they've requested. I believe, given some of the modifications that they've made to the plans, some of these waiver requests will change. I mean, number five, obviously it's going to change. They've requested waiver to permit 20 dwelling units, that's going to change to 18. So we will require an update of the waiver requests well before we have the hearing mid-January, when we're going to have to consider those waiver requests.
Okay. And in advance of that, have you requested the engineering dev? That was a little vague to me. Yes or no? That you, you alluded to the fact that you were concerned about making a decision without understanding the economic impact, also without having, and you thought it would be difficult to make those decisions without.
Right. So I, yeah, but you, you heard me correctly. And then I guess it was Bob who came up and said he understood that they would be proceeding at their risk and they will have to justify the waiver requests. And if they don't have the data to support it, we are not going to be granting those waiver requests. And to the extent that they need to provide the data that will demonstrate that they need the waiver request, they've got to have it by the time we make that decision or they're not going to get the waiver.
And that, that decision is in February or January?
Well, the, the final decision of the board will be February 19th unless it's extended. But before we reach that date, we will be making, I'll call it an interim assessment on the waiver requests because to the extent that we say no and they say they really need it, they've got to come back to us and demonstrate it. And then if it's not acceptable, we can, we can take additional steps to see whether or not it really needs to, whether the waiver request is justified. So it's, it's not a final decision, it's a preliminary decision.
Sorry to hit you with a lot.
No, no.
The whole discussion about the sightline going on to town land.
Yes.
Clearing.
Yes.
When and where does that fit in on some conclusion?
To the extent that the sightline requirements mandate that certain work be done and the applicant is representing that they'll be able to get that work to happen, then that will be a condition of this permit. And if in fact, they do not have the ability to get that work to happen, they will not be able to build under the permit.
Right. I mean, I'm not a lawyer either, but I just reviewed that Groton case and that is pretty right on point.
Okay. And still, and we will have, we're, we're not going to actually debate the legal issues on, on the Groton case, but in fact, there will have to be an assessment and ultimately this board will decide what conditions are going to be put into the permit and then the applicant will decide if they can meet them or not.
Thank you.
Yes, yes, please.
I think one of the things that we're going to endeavor to provide, because I, I think at this point in time, we're clear on, you know, what our plans are going to be, what's been asked by the town. I think within the next couple of weeks, we plan on having an updated waiver request list because I think some of the waivers we requested are no longer relevant.
Exactly.
Those will come out. There's a few that we know, that we identified that we need to add and maybe a couple will be tweaked, but we recognize the importance of that and we will endeavor to get that to you quickly.
Yep.
Joe, while we're, since we're, I didn't know if you were going to kind of wait till the end on a recap, but since you're spending so much time on the, the issue of the waiver list, it's just a decision the board needs to make. Are we, first, are we confirmed this is condominium, one lot? There's not going to be deeds of separate lots or?
Right.
Okay. So the regulation.
So.
We'll put that aside.
So you've put that, it's okay, because we don't have that. Okay.
All right. So the regulations provide, if it's not, if they're not seeking subdivision approval, they don't need subdivision waivers unless the board chooses to look at the subdivision rules and regulations. And under the zoning bylaws, if this was a special permit.
Right.
The zoning bylaws provide that there will be conformance with the subdivision rules and regulations. So they've requested kind of a global waiver of the subdivision rules and regulations. So it's a question for you because the regulations do allow you to look at those, whether or not you're comfortable with a global waiver or whether you want a list of how the road construction is deviating from the subdivision rules and regs. So that's for you to decide, but I think if you want that list, it's something that should be part of the waiver list.
Okay.
So I, you know, if that's something you're expecting them to prepare for the next meeting.
Right. But in part, won't they need to provide that to us in order to demonstrate that a failure to get that waiver would render this project uneconomic?
Right. So they do need more detail of every deviation from the rules and regs. Right.
Exactly. Yes, sir. You've been very patient.
Jim Washington, I don't know the geography well. Well, I'm aware of the site in the Explorer to CPA, CPC. I'm wondering, is there any opportunity to get, negotiate engagements for the integrating property to the school? If you can get a totally alternate road, say, school, you know, like Simmons Road across the, across the school.
Behind us is wetland, so I don't know.
Which is now possible.
So there's wetland, it, the big wetland goes, is right between their site and South School.
There's nowhere to pass.
Yeah. So that's a good, good question. I like the approach. But I don't, I don't know that they can, I don't think they can do it.
I know the commission.
Plus you ultimately wrote it to Constitution.
Trails plan, and this was a segment of it. If it were physical, it might be a, a good spot.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes.
Shane Tree, what's that from Landis? Because he usually runs those.
Hi, my name's Anita Comer Ford and I live at 893 Main Street. And Bill, I have a question for you. When you had the preliminary utility and drain plan up sheet C3 and you were talking about all the retention basins that are being moved and some of them are being eliminated and they're all being tied into that underground, do you know, I, I couldn't hear or see, were these two staying where they are or are they being removed and tied into your plan as well?
Removed and tied.
Okay. So those are gone as well. And I have a request. I'm assuming that before the next meeting, we'll have a revised plan from SEB.
I, I think we, it would certainly help our, our review if we did. Is that your?
My request would be is if we could get it maybe like a week in advance of any hearing so that I can have it looked at by my engineering.
And in terms of the revised paint, you're talking about?
Schematic.
The schematic that was up there.
Schematic that, that is now going to be changed because we're moving that underground thing to off the road and now it's going.
Moving in north.
And we're, it, it sounds like a massive change.
Well, let's, but I, I like your question in terms of timing. When do you think we'd be, that you'd be able to generate that so that we can look at it as well as the public? Is this, I mean, today's the fifth, are we talking?
We can have it before the holidays.
Great, okay. Before Christmas. Okay.
After the holidays. You got the wrong proposition.
Which, which holiday? New Year's? How about this?
Christmas.
Christmas, okay. I just want, if we all get a date, that way we'll all.
It could be the fifteenth.
I have another comment, if you don't mind. Mr. Cheshire has pointed out a couple of times that there is an existing easement indicated on the plans and the response that was received was that that's not an easement, that it's a way. But actually, an easement and a way are not mutually exclusive terms. They are in fact, one in the same and I am the holder of that easement. And I have an implied easement. It's perpetual and I have not released my rights to that easement to use it for the purpose for which it was intended, which is a way. Thank you.
Joe, I, there's been, not a lot, but some number of correspondence, whether it's been peer review or, you know, some information that I conveyed to Emily today, you know, just with the Title V and kind of the timing on that.
Right.
I would just suggest maybe for the next hearing that there be two, because the last hearing was May 22nd. So I suggest, just so you have a complete record, that there be a list compiled of all of the correspondence received, whether it's peer review or otherwise, so that that list can be incorporated into the record at the next meeting.
That's a great idea.
Because I, you know, there's stuff, for example, there was like the, a memo from Roger Fernandez today, there's been Johns and Jeffs, et cetera.
Right.
Different correspondence and it hasn't been all referenced tonight.
Okay. So we'll have that list as well as the underlying correspondence and memos included in the record.
Yep.
Emily, is that something you can?
Sure.
Great. We should set a date and a topic agenda for the next meeting. As we all get in our calendars. It's important that we get the, the updated waiver list so that we can make it two weeks. So today's the fifth, so two weeks will be the 19th, which coincidentally, the board will be meeting on the 19th. We'll have the.
We'll be in at.
No, no.
Sorry. We're starting at six.
It's going to be crazy. But that means that, you know, we will, we'll have the waiver list on the 19th, so we should be in a position at the beginning of January to be looking at that and to make an assessment of, of whether or not the waivers are, are supported by the record. And in addition to the waiver list, the revised plans, you're also talking about two weeks, which would be right before Thanksgiving, not, right before Christmas, is that, is that fair? So with that in mind, January.
I think the week of the sixth is frankly more realistic.
Yeah.
Because the, the New Year's holiday this year inconveniently falls right in the middle of the week.
Right, on Wednesday, the first.
Wednesday. Wednesday.
Right.
And we have nothing scheduled that week otherwise.
We're here on the 15th.
Todd, you're the one with the most challenging schedule.
Yeah, you know what, my outlook just crashed and pulled me back up.
Okay.
But that is the 6th, the week of the 6th, you're talking about Wednesday, the 8th?
Yeah, is Wednesday or Thursday? Do you have a preference?
I should be able to do both because I'm not teaching until September. It's February. But let me, I'll confirm my availability.
Right, right, right. Okay. And what about-
I'll do Wednesday, the 8th.
We're talking about Wednesday, the 8th of January?
They're all Thursdays?
The 8th, I mean the 9th.
John can't do the 9th.
But he can do the 8th.
He can do the 8th.
And Jeff?
January 8th.
So, Todd's computer recovery.
Yeah, so I can do the 8th or the 9th.
Let's go for the 8th.
Okay. 7:00 PM?
7:00.
Can you guys get here at 7:00? And Susan, I think at that point, we should be going over the waiver list.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I guess, so the questions are, where are, so where are we on the peer review? Jeff, you feel you're complete at this point?
I'm sure the review will be still approximate.
Right. Okay. And then, John, I mean, you have your list of kind of, I don't have this information, so.
Well, they're going to provide some updated plans, I think, to address a few things.
Okay.
I think they're going to show the grading within the right way. They're going to show, look at that floodplain area.
Yeah.
And they are going to redesign some of the drainage.
Right.
Okay.
To potentially reduce some conflicts.
Right.
Which would be good.
It would probably be nice to start off with, I thought you did an excellent job of showing sort of the updates to the plans.
That was great, yes.
To the extent now that, that would be a nice way to start off, so everyone has a common knowledge base about what the plan is and, you know, that reflects the changes you discussed this evening. That would be, that would be very helpful. One other thing, as someone who also kind of, you know, will make presentations, to the extent that there's any way, and you pointed out that you do have a lot of very good information on your plans, if there's any way that you could do any sort of light coloring so that, you know, we can see kind of the roadway, but you can still see, maybe make it at, you know, 30% opacity or something like that, just so it's a little easier, because you've got a lot of good information on your plans and it is very helpful. But I think it'll, it'll help all of us to just understand the kind of the good work you've done. There's a lot on those plans and they're tough to read late at night.
He's an engineer, not a site planner, so he wants to put all this stuff on there.
That's fine, that's fine. We can lightly color over a lot of it.
So, so Joe, yeah, I mean, if they, if the information comes in this month-
Right.
And then, you know, Jeff has one thing he's looking at, John has a few things he needs to look at. So if the presentation and their review is substantially wrapped up-
Right.
Then the next thing is to, you know, go into the waiver list and then also discuss any other proposed conditions.
Right. But we will need input from ConCom and the Board of Health.
Right. So this meeting would be January 8th. So I know the Board of Health is meeting next week. Steve Wade, who's the chair, said he was planning on putting it on their agenda next week.
Okay.
Emily's given them complete hard copy packets. So hopefully on the local waiver. I don't know if, Abby, you have to talk to Abby-
Yep.
If ConCom's going to go through the list of local waivers.
Okay.
But yeah, that would have to be for-
Are they meeting next Monday night?
Board of Health or ConCom?
The ConCom.
Concom.
Because I would have no problem just dropping by and saying-
That would be terrific.
We need your input.
Right. And even if-
She needs to get it on the agenda, though. It needs to get on the agenda, but they don't-
Well, we could do it as an informal-
If we can get the-
I think they could add it to the agenda tomorrow.
The electronic PDF, even for that meeting, because just blowing it up, moving it around, answered questions. But that was very helpful.
Help us get through it quickly. So if we're, if we're in a position of talking about waivers in early January, we should be fine. We should, we should be able to meet all our, all our dates.
Yeah, right. Do we want to plan beyond January 8th for a meeting after that? At least we can pencil it in in terms of-
Right. Because I think what's going to come down to January 8th is what waivers you're willing to grant or if there's any you're unwilling to grant. And then any other-
Conditions.
Conditions that might affect the plan that you might want to propose at that point, at which point they have to go back and determine whether or not they're going to make some, all or none. So I think then that would be, the subsequent meeting would be them saying whether or not they can live with it.
So we have a 15th meeting, I was with Emily, I have a conflict with the South Hingham, I don't remember what it's called, corridor study group or something, on the 22nd. So that's a 7 to 9 hearing.
What about the 23rd?
The planning board hoped that you might be available on the 23rd as a potential continuation date for this cell tower.
Oh. So that's not going to work. 21st?
Tuesday.
Because we're, we're really coming up against deadlines here.
I can, I can do the 21st.
21st?
Yep.
That's a Tuesday?
It is.
Yep.
Jeff, does that work for you? Okay. So, we'll also assume Tuesday, January 21st. Also at 7:00.
If that's, if that's the only thing we have on that night, does the board prefer 7:00 or 7:30?
I'm, I'm comfortable with 7:00 unless you have an issue getting here.
7:30 gives me a little more wiggle room.
Some nights it's really tight getting there.
Okay.
7:30 on Tuesday, the 21st.
On the 8th, 7:00 or 7:30?
You know, if it's the only thing we have on our agenda, I would actually, I appreciate the extra half hour to get back from KAM.
Okay, so 7:30 as well.
Yeah, so 7:30 on the 8th, good.
The 8th and 21st at 7:30.
Good point.
I'd also, it's possible to get another hearing scheduled either that week or the following week or the week after.
Because, well, would they children?
Well, the following week would be January 30th or the week after that. You're talking February 6th.
When does class start, Todd? 13th or the 6th?
We, I start, I think, the 6th.
So it'd be February 5th then?
Yeah, yep. February 5th, I'm good on February 5th. I'm also good the week of-
The week of the 27th, like the 29th or 30th?
Yes.
You mean-
We'd probably appreciate, we'd prefer the 30th to the-
29th.
To the 29th on that week. Yeah, those dates.
Is that-
They weren't-
I'd, I'd feel comfortable booking that then on the 30th, 7:30.
7:30 on the 30th, okay.
January 30th, 7:30. And I think, I mean, we know that we've got the deadline of February 19th, which is a Wednesday. And if we do the 30th, that will give us essentially two and a half weeks.
Well, so this is what's going to happen. If they, if the applicant comes back on, so you're going to discuss waivers, everything on the 8th?
Right. Because they're going to have, right before Christmas, they're going to-
They're going to come back on the 21st, say what they can and can't do.
Right.
If they say there are certain things they can't do, at that point, the board can choose to request the pro forma and it's going to need to be whatever amount of time to get reviewed. So, I don't, between the 21st, I mean, so then you're going to meet again on the 30th? So you, I mean, you request a pro forma, it needs, I'm assuming it's already done. But then, review it by the 30th?
We can review those quickly, yeah.
Yeah, I think we can. And it may not even be that.
Right. If you request it.
I'll take your trash corpse.
If you request it.
Right.
Okay. So, and then at that point, you're really up to, then you're deciding, do we switch around our, so I mean, you're pretty much at the place of making a decision one way or another.
Yeah.
At whatever your next meeting is. I don't know if you want to do the-
I want to keep, the reason I want to keep the 30th is that it is likely that there's information that we've requested, that members of the public have requested, that either is not quite there or is there in a format that we need addressed.
Okay.
So they'll give us a little wiggle room to get that-
Well, all right. Then I suggest maybe you do something, when's, when's, school, school vacation week is, is the week of the 16th? Yes, is that right?
Of-
Of February? Isn't that, isn't President's Day the 17th? Is that right? Or is it the 10th?
I would guess the 17th.
The 17th.
Okay. So I'm thinking, you know, if you're going to get, you, you want to probably do the